All right, good evening. Welcome to the Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, June 30th. Tonight, we have a continued public hearing for 59 Quobog Avenue. Their appeal of the zoning enforcement officer's cease and desist order. The way I'd like to handle this tonight is we do have the five inspectors who visited the property. I'd like to bring them up one at a time and ask them to present the information that they found. I guess there was pictures that we have, and also there was a report that was filed with each. I'd like to ask if they could come up and present what that is. Maybe we could do it alphabetically, starting with the, I'll say, animal, animal control officer. And then, I guess, the board members can ask questions when they're finished their presentation. Then we'll bring the next person up. Okay?
I just want to let the board know that pursuant to open meeting law, my client is recording the meeting.
Okay, I'm okay with that, I guess. All right, who is the animal? Hi, hi, could you say your name?
Yes, should I come up here?
Yes, please.
My name's Kelly, Kathleen is my real name, but everybody calls me Kelly Flynn.
Okay, thank you. So, I think we have some pictures that, they are written ACO on the bottom, so maybe you could describe what those are, and also let us know, just in general, what you found.
Okay, um, do you want me to go picture by picture, or just?
Whatever you think is relevant.
Is it possible to get them simultaneously on here?
I don't think we're set up for that.
Okay.
Let me just renew my objection that the photos stay private, because they do depict the interior of my client's home.
Yeah, we don't have an overhead camera tonight. We used to have one over this table, so we don't have the capability to broadcast them.
Okay, so, in the garage, I'm starting with that, because it's the pictures I have here, but in the cellar, I'm sorry, in the cellar, there was a very large aquarium, I guess you would call a glass cage, that had box turtles in it, different sizes. And then, there was also some plastic, like, storage containers that had more box turtles in it, that also had dried out leaves, and it appears to be like dried grass, and they each had some turtles in them. And they did have a lamp that was pretty much, it was very, very close to the dry material. Um, then...
And that would be kind of what this picture is with?
Yes.
Okay.
Then, I also took some pictures of the containers that they raised the dubia roaches in, which are roaches that they use to feed the bearded dragons. And on this particular, well, I just have more pictures of the turtles on this right here, too, but, oops.
So, with, is this picture the picture of the?
The dubia roaches, where they raise the dubia roaches.
This is this picture here.
With breeder six on it?
I'm sorry, Tom, what was that?
I'm not trying to act like a director or anything, but what I would suggest if you're saying this, you might want to identify either by marking the picture, or telling him what it is, or instead of folding it up across the room.
Yeah, I mean, they're not, the pictures are not numbered, but, so, this is, there's three pictures here. They are of gray bins on shelf with maybe a black or brown cover. The writing on the front says breeder six, and the bin next to it says F900, M250. There's another couple of bins that are gray bins without covers with the heat lamp inside, one, actually, in both of them. And this other on this wooden shelf, same, appears to be the same shelf, probably those same two bins that I had, oh, actually, and I see a number nine on this third bin. That first bin that had the F900 and M250, looks like it had a number one on it. So, these are the ones that you saw?
Yes.
This is in the basement?
No, the bins were in the garage, on shelves.
Garage, okay.
The adult turtles were in the basement.
Okay.
And then, there was some turtles that I believe just hatched, that were on the top shelf in the garage. And I, there's like four pictures of those little teeny turtles.
Okay. Does the board want to know which pictures those are, of the teeny tiny turtles in the garage?
I don't see them.
Would it be that picture, or?
Yes.
So, it's a picture, there's a couple of pictures, looks like a sheet of plastic, maybe, that they're on, like a hard sheet of plastic, or?
Yes, and then, there's material under there, under that.
It looks like leaves or other things underneath that?
Is it called spagnum? It's like mossy kind of material.
Okay. All right, is there anything else you want to let us know, from your report, or?
I mean, do you want me to read the report, or just kind of highlight it?
I don't think it's necessary to read it. It was, it's, we have a copy of it for the record. Does anybody disagree with that?
If I could just ask a couple of quick questions. First of all, thank you for coming tonight. Did you have a chance to count the number of turtles in the basement and in the garage?
Yes, we did. I believe that, no, the total of bearded dragons that we counted, I believe, was 158. I do have the count of the turtles, too. The count of the turtles was probably not 100%, because in some of the tubs, the tubs were filled with, you know, the leaves and everything.
So, the ones you could see?
Yes, yes. There was 12 of the hatchling turtles in the garage. And I don't know if I have my, the count of the turtles in the cellar, right in front of me, right now.
The report says approximately 160 bearded dragons and more than 30 ornate box turtles were observed.
Right, all together, yeah.
Okay.
Did that 30 include the ones in the garage?
Yes.
Go ahead, Tom.
Question I have on, did you have any opportunity to observe any of the turtle eggs?
No, I did not.
You didn't see any breeding ground, or hatchery?
I did not see any turtle eggs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, questions for the animal control officer? Okay.
Not right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a few questions?
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Flynn, did you previously inspect this property prior to April 2nd, 2021?
No.
Did you attempt to contact the owners of the property to inspect it?
Yes.
And when did you attempt to contact them?
I don't know the exact date. Right here, I have it in my notes, in my book, but I don't have it in front of me right this second. I did speak to Mr. Fleming on the phone.
And what was the nature of the conversation?
It was in response to the letter that he sent to me, saying, you know, asking people to inspect one at a time. So, I did call him, but he felt as though, at this time, that, he felt as though bearded dragons were common household pets, and that they didn't come under this law right here. So, you know, the law about requiring a special permit.
Did he effectively deny you access to inspect?
Yeah.
How so?
He was very polite about it, but he said that he didn't feel as though an inspection was needed at this time.
Did he attempt to coordinate a date and time with you?
No.
Do you believe if bearded dragons are customary household pets?
I believe that bearded dragons are exotic pets. If you're, if you want to get your bearded dragon treated, most regular veterinarians don't treat bearded dragons. You have to go to an exotic veterinarian.
So, it's your opinion it's not a customary pet?
Right.
And are you aware of any other properties in town which have bearded dragons present?
I know they have, I've seen like a couple at Pet Supply Plus.
And do you know how many they have?
The one time that I went over there to look, I only saw two, and they were, they were very small.
And do you know if they have a special permit pursuant to ordinance 3.8?
To my knowledge, they do not have a special permit. They do have a pet shop license.
Is it your opinion that my clients require a pet shop license?
No.
I have nothing further.
All right, I actually have one point of business before I proceed to bringing up the Board of Health. I was supposed to read this into the record. Alfred Jermain couldn't make the previous meeting, so by law, he has to view either a transcript or a video and sign an affidavit. So, it's I, Alfred, our St. Jermain, have missed a single session of the Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals' public hearing on the application of Casey Fleming, Kevin Frederick Carbonneau, and Robert King for appeal of the zoning enforcement officer's cease and desist. Hereby certify that I have examined all the evidence received at the missed session held on June 24th, 2021 by reviewing a written transcript of the missed session, and he signed this under pains and penalties of perjury 28th of June, 2021. So, that's why Al can participate tonight.
I got one question. Counsel referenced a date in April. There are dates on the bottom of the pictures that you had referenced, it has the initials, I assume, ACO, and then, a date of 3/23/21. Was that the date that these pictures were taken?
Yes, Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, is when we did the inspection.
Was there a subsequent inspection in April?
I did not go back in April. I only, I went once.
Okay, no, I just, because it seemed confusing, counsel brought up a date in April that you seemed to agree upon, but the pictures were dated a different date.
So, let me clarify that I was there on March 23rd, 2021.
Very, thank you.
Okay, okay.
Through the chair, if I could?
Yes, Mary.
When I compiled these photographs, it was me who put ACO and the date.
Okay.
It was me who put, identified who?
Who provided the photographs?
Who took the pictures.
Okay.
So, that was me.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we're all set. Kelly, thank you. Board of Health? Hi, could you please give us your name?
Yes, my name is Allison Novak.
Okay, Allison. Hi, would you like to take us through the pictures you took, or any other information you'd like to provide?
Sure, just as Kelly had mentioned, I also observed the tanks with the turtles, both in the garage and in the basement. I believe there's pictures of that, from my pictures as well.
But before you get into it, what dates were you there? Were you there also the same date, 3/23?
We were, yes, in the later March date, we were all together. I also did a inspection at the beginning of the month, on March 8th, I believe, is the date I was there the first time.
That's the date on these pictures that we have?
Correct.
Okay.
So, when I arrived, I also, you know, the garage was set up with several rows of bins, the plastic bins, with heating lamps inside them, with also the animals inside. There was exposed sheet rock and insulation in the garage, as well as overloaded electrical outlets, which you'll see many pictures of. And in the back of the garage, when you went to the back, that's where they stored their feeder insects. So, they had the roaches in there, as well as larvae that they fed, I believe, to the bearded dragons. And some of those receptacles were open, so, you know, I wrote that up as a possible Those were the main defects. A lot of it was centered around the electrical outlets, the exposed sheet rocks, and just also what I just mentioned about the insects and other animals.
All right, you get extra credit, because you actually put a caption under your pictures that describes what it is, so that's very helpful. I wanted to ask about this picture that says the garage unidentified larvae on the walls. Is that?
Hold on, I want to...
Are you able to see that picture?
Oh, yes, okay, yep.
Oh, yes.
I'm curious to understand what that, I mean, I can see the spots up along the seam of the wall, I guess, where the walls meet, and the ceiling.
Right, and, you know, I questioned the owners about those, and they said that, you know, sometimes the animals got loose, or there was, you know, maws about, and so, that was, they would try to vacuum it up as much as possible, that those were either older areas where those were, and not recent, so.
Okay.
They were kind of hard even to see from the floor, because it was, you know, pretty high up, so.
Okay. Are there any other questions the board may have?
If I could just have a moment.
All right, while you're doing that, David, could I ask a question? So, I think, looking at your report, you're saying the property has become a public nuisance, and you stated a Mass General Law, Chapter 111, Section 122, accumulation of cockroaches, worms, and other insects, kept in open, non-secure containers, as well as the significant number of reptiles, has led to nuisance odors and created significant health and safety concerns. Could you, what were the, were the odors strong just inside the garage, or was it something you could smell as you approached it, or?
Honestly, you know, for a place that had that many bearded dragons in it, the smell wasn't terrible. You could obviously know that there was animals in there, and it was, you know, pretty humid, because that's how they have to keep the environment for them. You know, I'm not a bearded dragon expert by any means, but, you know, in all accounts, it was fairly clean, but, you know, it was my recommendation that if you're going to have containers of that many roaches or other insects, it's probably a good idea to cover them, just because, you know, want to cause any further, like, infestations, or issues with them if they were to get loose, so.
Okay.
Tom, yes. The question I have is on the odors, were they noticeable outside the building? Could you smell them outside?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you speak to the electrical wiring?
Sure, so, there were several areas of the garage with very overloaded electrical outlets, like surge protectors, that had, you know, a plethora of things, you know, going in there. So, it looked, from my, you know, point of view, to be a safety hazard, along with, you know, having kind of heat lamps, and other people that are behind me here today can speak probably in more detail about the dangers of that. But, you know, having that high heat next to plastic, to me, just seemed more like a hazard as well, so, yeah. I mean, there were several areas with electrical outlets that were just really overused, in my opinion.
Could I ask, you had a picture from outside, it says 59 Quobog substances in the window. What did, what did that refer to?
So, when I just did a promoter check, I was checking to make sure that there was no, you know, insects outside, or vermin outside of the residence, or around the foundation, and just, I just noticed something, and that could have been alarming in that room. So, at that point, on the 8th, that's when that was taken, I felt that further investigation needed to happen, to know exactly what was going on, and what that was, because I didn't know.
What was the substance in the window?
I still am not sure. There was a lot of plants in there, so it could have been associated with plants.
Was it like a plastic film, or was it a?
It was like a liquid.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, and then, I did have a question also. I saw the picture of the animal trap in the backyard, and I was wondering if you had any idea what they, what that was intended for, or?
I honestly don't, you know, I have traps similar to that, that I catch, you know, rodents, or, you know, bigger type of animals.
So, like a have-a-heart trap, or?
Yeah, that's what it looked like to me.
Did it have any bait in it, or?
Not that I saw.
No? Okay, all right.
On the outside as well, was there a terrarium of some type, or some type of an enclosure? A wire-fenced-in enclosure for keeping of?
Yeah, I didn't know exactly what it was, but it was...
Obviously, it has to be some animal that's bigger than what the openings are in the mesh, or the containment material.
Presumably, yeah. I mean, I, it was kind of a, I don't know, maybe five, six feet by eight feet, kind of square rectangular area.
I could see something from the street. It looked like litter, and, litter being forest litter, or leaves and all of that, some branches.
Yeah.
Type of a animal enclosure of some type.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I thought it was as well.
But there's no signs of an animal or any, yeah, right?
There was no animal out there at the time. I mean, it was early March, too, and March in general, so it wasn't very warm out.
All right, any other questions for the Board of Health? All right, thank you for your help.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just sat with you.
Oh, sorry.
Did you write a report for the 3/8 inspection?
I did.
Did you provide that to the homeowner?
In looking, I was looking at my records, I do have a letter from three, from after that inspection. Trying to see how it was dated. It was from the 10th, I believe, following that inspection.
Did you mail that out?
I believe, I believe so, I mean, I have the copy of it, so, I don't see that I didn't. I'd have to go back and do a little bit more investigation on it.
Did you see any evidence of infestation?
Other than that kind of area where there was larvae on the ceiling, which I wasn't sure what that was at the time, and I had to come back to the office to do a little investigation. I didn't see anything like crawling on the floors, or anything around the foundation when I did the promoter walk through, yeah, sorry.
And are you aware of any repairs that have made, been made at the house since 3/23/21?
I am not.
I have nothing further.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Could I ask the fire inspector to come up, please?
Good evening, Deputy Chief Sellers, the town's fire inspector.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Would these be marked E and I?
He didn't have.
I did not take any pictures.
Okay.
Nor videos.
Okay.
I was merely there to inspect the fire code violations.
Okay.
And that is all I, that is what I kept my focus on, is fire code violations.
Okay. Would you like to just maybe tell us what you think you found, or?
I can quote to you what I did find, under the Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Code Analysis and Codebook. There were multiple electrical hazards. Under 527 CMR 1, Chapter 10, the operation of heat lamps in close proximity of combustible materials, dry decaying leaves, and other natural vegetations. Those were located in the basement, where the turtles were habit being kept. I'm being the authority, having jurisdiction underneath the Massachusetts Fire Code, I am charged with the authority to prohibit fires and whatnot, so that's what I was doing Chapter 10 of 527 CMR, an occupancy is limited in quantities in combustibles or vegetation. Again, where the turtles were being kept, there was, there was a, in the fire terminology, there was a, there was a high combustible fire hazard within the turtles, due to the heat lamp and the decaying of vegetation. All of the vegetation in that, in those turtle cages, tanks, whatever you want to call them, they were, they were all dry. So, I will, I will also, before I go further, I will let you know that they, the clients, they were, they were cooperative with me. We had, we had what I thought was a decent rapport between the three of us, but they do have, they did have some fire violations. 527 CMR 1, Chapter 11, violation use of extension cord to multiple plugs as permitted in a wiring powering heating lamp in the garage. Multiple extension cords were being used, surge protectors, long extension cords, all being plugged into one outlet, or being what's called daisy chained, where an extension cord is plugged into an extension cord, which is then plugged into another extension cord, and goes to an outlet. There was flexible extension cords used. Under 527 CMR 1, in Chapter 11, you are temporarily allowed to use such devices, but it is specifically not to exceed 90 days, and it is also specifically to holiday decorations. 527 CMR 1, Chapter 13.7.3.1, Mass General Law, Chapter 148, 26E and 26F, smoke alarms shall be installed in accordance with the applicable requirements of the Section 13.7. At the time of my inspection, they had one smoke detector working within the house. The one in the basement was taken down and placed on a shelf. The one on the second-floor hallway was missing, was not, was not there. So, that in itself is a violation. They were given a cease and desist order by my office, in which they were also given up to 45 days to contact the Board of Fire Prevention Regulations, and have a hearing to my findings. To this date, as of right now, I have not heard from the Fire Prevention, Board of Fire Prevention Regulations at the Fire Marshal's Office. And I do not have any updates on whether any of the violations were repaired.
So, 45 days is to have a hearing to discuss, or that's 45 days to correct the situation?
Correct. No, they have, they have 45 days to the day of the cease and desist order, to, within that time, contact the Board of Fire Regulations and have a hearing on whether my findings were, and that, to the best of my knowledge, has not happened.
Okay. All right.
That is, that is it, I believe. You gentlemen have a copy of my inspection report in the packet.
That's part of this cease and desist order, I guess?
It should be, yes.
And the inspection report is?
All of the codes that I have just quoted to you are on that.
Appears that it's page four of the packet that everybody has from the Oxford Fire EMS. Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody have any questions?
No. Thank you.
I think Mr. Sellers.
Couple of questions. Again, your inspection date was March 23rd?
Yes, sir.
And second of all, the 45-day appeal period, when did that expire?
Forty-five days from the day that they received the cease and desist.
Right. When did they, when, what's the date on the?
April 2nd.
April 2nd.
Is a cease and desist.
So they have until May 17th or they're about?
June, maybe June, June 17th. June 17th, middle of June, I guess.
So the 45 days has elapsed, didn't it?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, yes, Stephen?
Did you observe any fire extinguishes throughout the complex?
I did not.
Oh, about exit signs?
Did not. It was a residential home.
So in the garage, it's probably the garage door, one door going out, so in case, or even in the cellar.
Well, technically, in a garage, there are two means of egresses, the garage door itself and the man door.
And it was one entrance going into the cellar?
Yes.
That's through the house downstairs?
Yes, I did not walk the perimeter of the house. I do not know if there is.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I don't think there's any other questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, I guess we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wiring inspector?
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Alfred W. Banfield, and I live at 19 May Marion Street in Oxford. I'm the inspector of wires for the town of Oxford. I also consider myself a public safety officer also, protect life, limit property. So I was invited to go to the address on March 23rd and go through the, some of the photos. The first one is a picture of the two electrical panels.
I'm sorry, excuse me. These are the ones that are marked E and I on the bottom or EI?
Yes.
Electrical or EL? Okay, thank you.
It's the landscape. The one on the, on the left is the two electrical panels.
This is, yes.
In.
First page of the, yes, two electrical panels. David has it.
Okay.
The receptacle below the panel is shown with a device cover missing. And the one on the right shows the non-metallic wiring. And on the wiring, there's a date code that tells you when the cable was manufactured. Unfortunately, in this photo, it doesn't show it, but that was to mainly point out that this wiring was done with no electrical permit pulled.
How do you determine that?
It has a date code similar to a milk bottle, so it'll tell you how, the age of the wire. So certainly, the electrical permit would have been pulled after the date code.
So you know, based on the date of manufacturing, the permit would have to be after that?
Yes.
Okay. This is the yellow cable that has the black letter?
It happened on the white cable.
On the white also?
The yellow cable is color-coded for a number 12 gauge wire, and the white is color-coded as a 14-gauge conductor.
Okay.
So if there, if these had been put in by a licensed electrician, then there would have been a permit pulled, you're saying?
Yes. So what kind of dates when the, when the work was being?
The date on the wires, the date was manufactured. So it could not have been installed before then. They had to have installed, been installed after it was manufactured.
And if this question goes above and beyond what you're here for, please let me know. But if I'm understanding you correctly, then the, you're saying that because there was no wiring permit pulled?
Mm-hmm.
To you, is it clear that there was no licensed electrician that wired this?
I can't state that, only that there wasn't an electrical permit performed, you know, for the work that was being done.
If an electrician were to be the one to wire, a licensed electrician were to be the one that wired it, would they know that an electrical permit must be pulled?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the third photograph shows that the, there was no legend on the panel showing where the circuitry went.
And that's a requirement for?
Yes.
Okay.
That's in Article 408.4 in the NEC Code 2020. And the fourth picture, if you will, shows the, the storage that's in front of the electrical panels, and that's just a safety hazard. That's in Article 110, Part 2. If you turn to my fifth photo, it's showing all the wiring that's on the metal cages. And I put my, these are all rows of metal cages, and I took my pen tester out, although it's not that sophisticated. I could tell that there was an electrical potential on these cages. And every appliance has a certain amount of leakage current, but if you look closely, all the luminaires?
What's a luminaire?
The lighting fixture that they were providing ultraviolet lighting for the bearded dragons. And they were all, most of them were wired with a two-wire cord, which doesn't have the grounding conductor or the ground prong on them. And that would dissipate that leakage current that I'm talking about.
So you're saying the metal shelf that these are on, you can actually sense voltage on that?
With my pen tester, although it's not sophisticated, I was concerned for it. And that's why my first one was, reads, ensure that all of the luminaires providing the UVB, UVV lighting are properly grounded. Because there's ballast in there that puts out a high voltage power to make that light illuminate. So that was a concern. And the fourth picture is a picture of the cages that had some of the other animals. I can't tell if they're the bearded dragons or whatever in those wooden cages.
I'm sorry, you meant your sixth picture, your final picture?
I'm sorry, my fifth, my sixth, yeah.
So that's the, this stack of five, looks like five enclosures in one stack with wooden doors maybe on the front?
Yes.
But it's maybe, is it screen material or, or plastic? I mean, you can see into the cage, into the pens.
Yeah, and you can see the, the heat lamp that's in there.
Yeah, I think from the picture, it's clear they are the, it appears to be the dragons. They're not turtles. Okay. Does anybody have, Tom?
Actually, my question now goes back to the fire inspector as well. Mr. Banfield has already given us enough pictures and description. I'm more concerned now with the heat lamps, having seen them now in the plastic containers or the bins and seeing this, this rack that you, of, that you showed. It appears though, the wooden rack?
Yes.
My question now goes back to the fire inspector. These add to the fire load, these containers or habitats?
Yes.
They would add to the fire load?
Plastic is considered a combustible.
Right, we're not, we're not only just, we're not only concerned about the leaf litter, now we're also contain, concerned about the fire load from all the plastic bins and any other materials.
I'm sorry, everything here is a combustible. So therefore, it has potential to be a fire hazard.
Again, it was just my point to clarify that it was more than just leaf litter as a source or an add to the fire load.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One for Al. The stack of cages that we have there and the lamps that are in, do you have any idea how much heat is being generated compoundedly from the bottom up to the top?
We were there on March 23rd, and it seemed like it was like humid in there.
Yeah.
And we did have a space heater that wasn't operating at the time, but the total heat load gained from all the luminaires, I don't know. Each one had like a 20 watt UVB light in it.
Was the heat on it in all the plastic cages, the plastic containers?
Not in all of them, no.
But in some of them?
Some of them just had the UV lights in them.
People don't realize, plastic is made of oil, petroleum. You produce too much heat on it. What happens is the petroleum evaporates from that plastic container. They'll contaminate anything in the area, even the animals, that you don't realize. And that's over longevity.
Right.
So I was just wondering if, like I said, the load we have from top to the bottom, you know, is there a five different, five degrees different, 10 degrees different? I mean, if there was no gauges to regulate that animal or reptile in there, how do you know what's the right humidity or the heat? I mean, that'd be these guys here.
Is that a question to the applicant, Stephen?
Whoever wants to answer.
We, we measure the heat output of the lamps. They're only 25 watts each, and we measure it at the basking spot for the dragons with a heat gun to verify it's only 100 degrees.
Is that at every cage? So you don't have any heat penetrating from the base all the way up? So if you've got 100 degrees on the bottom, you still have 100 in the middle, 100 and a third, 100 and fourth?
It's 100 on the bottom. The gradient? It would be in air. There's nothing, there's nothing between the space. It's just, just air. So you couldn't, there'd be no reason to measure that.
Is there a wire, what is it, they're on a wire cage? So if you have four stands, four cages, and each cage is a reptile, correct? All right, what's the floor made of?
So maybe we're talking about two different things. I thought maybe it was inside one of the plastic things we were talking about, the heat lamp. And I think you were saying it was 100 degrees in the basking area?
Yeah.
But I think what Stephen's asking is this picture that shows the five wooden enclosures that are stacked. So you're saying each one would be 100 degrees in the basking area?
Yeah. Are you, are you asking above the bulbs?
The one that looks like a bookcase.
Yeah.
All right, so is the temperature the same on the bottom and on the top?
Yes, yeah, we have a heat gun. We're checking at each, at each location.
So it doesn't fluctuate from one cage to the other?
No, we adjust it so that they don't.
And how do you do the same with a heat lamp?
Can I have the owner's name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, Robert King, 59 Hobart.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So how do you regulate the temperature with a heat lamp?
You change the distance. Or in the case of that, in that particular fixture.
Does the temperature consistent with every reptile? How many heat lamps? If you've got 100 reptiles in there, do you have 100 heat lamps to regulate all those temperatures inside that cage?
No, because some cages have more than one dragon.
So it's just that temp, the heated area is the basking area?
Yeah. Each, each enclosure, you can see with the heat lamp, has one heat lamp. The heat lamps are 25 watts apiece, so it's, it's simple arithmetic. It's not an enormous amount of electricity.
Okay. I'm all set.
Thank you. Tom, did you?
Going back, looking at a Board of Health picture from, from 3-8, it's labeled as The label calls, says garage, plastic bins containing baby lizards and heat lamps. Okay, and those are the heat lamps inside the plastic, inside the plastic bins, right?
Correct.
All right. Any, any other questions for Mr. Banfield?
I do have a few. Mr. Banfield, are all violations cited number one through five in your April 2nd letter? Do all of those require that a licensed contractor perform that work?
A licensed electrician, if he had installed the wire, would have provided a legend. He would provide the ground fault circuit interrupter protection for all the outlets. He would have installed the device covers on all the receptacles because it's, it's part of NEC. And the fifth one is kind of like housekeeping, if you will. But it is a requirement of Article 110, Part 2 in the NEC.
So is it possible for a non-licensed electric, or a non-electrician to be able to perform any of those repairs in one through five?
Probably number one. Because the NEC has no control of what people plug into a receptacle. It's only provided, but to put the three-wire cords on the UVV, UVV lighting would probably not require a license.
And then would number five, remove any and all storage equipment from electrical service equipment? Would that require a licensed contractor?
No. But only that it's required in Article 110, Part 2, that it's the electrical service organization.
Would a licensed contractor or licensed electrician be required to provide a legend on the electrical panel, or is that something a non-electrician could perform?
Here again, a licensed electrician would have performed that work, he would have provided the legend in the panel depicting where the circuitry went to.
But is it required to have a licensed electrician perform that work?
No, the homeowner can provide that legend on the panel.
And have you had occasion to re-inspect the premises?
No.
Have you been asked to re-inspect the premises?
Yes.
Did you, what was your reasoning for not re-inspecting the premises?
Well, the, the wiring done in the property requires a electrical permit, and part of that would be a rough inspection. But I couldn't, I never said I wouldn't, but I couldn't perform that inspection because the sheet rock was installed in all of the areas.
Prior to March 23rd, 2021, have you had occasion to inspect the premises?
Yes.
And when did you inspect the premises?
I don't know the dates, but we upgraded the service and put in solar panels.
And did you have any conversations with any of the owners at that point in time?
Yes.
And what was the nature of those conversations?
Just at the, just inspecting both the service equipment and solar equipment. And then you had to do some upgrading to the grounding.
And are you aware of any homeowner's exemptions to circumvent the licensed electrician process?
There's no exemption.
So all electrical work needs to be performed by a licensed electrician?
The homeowner can do their own wiring, but they won't be issued an electrical permit. So then they would not get an inspection. Because you need, I can only inspect work that's been performed by a licensed electrician.
So a homeowner can provide their own electrical repairs at the property, as long as they're the homeowner and they?
Yes, ironically, they can, but they won't, they won't get an inspection from.
So have, did you cite in your April 2nd letter that the owners perform work without a permit?
No.
You indicated that you were invited to go to this inspection on March 23rd. Who invited you?
Building department.
Prior to March 23rd and that inspection, did you request access to perform an inspection at the property?
No.
I have nothing further.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, the zoning enforcement officer.
Hi. Robert Lancy, the former zoning enforcement officer.
So I do notice we have a, we have a, you took the, probably a greater quantity of pictures than the other people. Would you like to tell us what you saw or describe some of the things?
I have not looked at the photos. Once I took them, I gave my computer to the office. They printed all the photos, and I have yet to see them. But I will tell you that I did go to the house. I went through with the other departments. I was in the, what? I was in the, what was originally built as a garage. Maybe you could describe these, as you took them.
Yeah, whatever you think is relevant, or.
Okay, well, relevant as far as the zoning enforcement, or?
Yes, and I just wanted, for the record, these were, I believe, Mayor, you're the one that wrote on the bottom of these pictures, B.C.?
B.C., the building.
And three twenty-three, that's the date on the bottom?
Yeah, okay. On page three.
Yeah, I don't know, there's, there's not page numbers on there, right?
But on the third page, there is the area in the basement where they're keeping all of the turtles.
Just for the record, I may have changed the order of those pictures that, that everybody has in their packet, so. They weren't stapled that I, originally. So maybe you could describe what it is, but.
Okay, it's a picture of the terrarium, as the animal control officer described it, with several turtles and heat lamps visible within it. On the first page, there's a, an area showing a, a section of shelving with all kinds of heat lamps on it that, at this point in time, did not have any dragons in it. On later page, I'm showing pictures with shelving, with, uh, the leaf litter and everything else, which was the area where more turtles were kept. The same pic, the same page is a picture showing just the accumulation of different materials in the basement area. The next page shows the desk where they were doing work, maintaining records, computers, et cetera, in the basement.
Was that a desk, or was that a table?
That looks like it's a table with two drawers in it, it has a computer monitor, and a lot of other computer modem and other equipment on the desk.
I'm sorry, I don't have the pictures in front of me, but I thought there was a picture maybe that showed looking into a room. And there was another one that was of a table, I think, that had letters stacked on it, or?
Okay, then the next page, I show a couple of pictures that show the business cards and other mail for the dragon business.
Was that, that same desk, or?
No, that's a different area.
Okay.
The desk was in the basement where the turtles are.
Okay.
And then the table was in, uh, the first room you enter from the front door. Just trying to stay relative to the business. Uh, there's more pictures of all of the plastic containers and wooden shelves with the dragons kept in them.
And that's in the garage?
That's in what had been formerly a garage, and had been insulated in sheet rock without any permits or inspections requested, which would have been required at the time. There's more pictures of just the cages and all of the supplies that they used for maintaining their business. I, I did skip over the ones showing all of the electrical cords and other things, the building code violations, because those weren't germane to tonight's topic, which was the cease and desist on business.
I think you had a picture in there of a whiteboard? Is that one of your pictures, or someone else's?
I, I did have a picture, I didn't see it, but let me go back through. There was, there was a picture of the whiteboard with different activities that were to be done.
Yeah, what room was that in?
That was in the garage area. And one of the earlier pictures, uh, there's a picture showing a gentleman, Al, standing outside and a car leaving. That person identified himself as an employee of the business, but failed, refused to give us his name.
There's a picture in there, I think, that had a bicycle in it? What was, what was the relevance of that picture? If I'm remembering correctly?
I'm gonna look to see, I don't remember taking a picture of a bicycle, but let me go through the pictures.
Almost like it was in front of a fireplace, but I'm not sure I'm remembering that, or mantle. Anybody else have that picture?
Oh, yes, yeah, I remember it.
I don't see a picture in mine, pictures showing a bicycle. In the copies that you gave me, I'm sorry. This one here, Robert. I don't know if you can see it from there. There's other pictures up here that I believe, they say B.C., I believe they were left here.
I had two packets.
Okay, that's why.
Yeah.
I didn't go through the second packet, I thought it was here. Okay, yes, I see the picture with the whiteboard, that was, uh, stating different tasks to be completed.
Can you tell?
There's.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. There's a photograph of the scale, nitro gloves, and all the little different post-it notes that they were using to weigh.
And that's in the basement, or?
No, that I believe was in the garage area. Based on where it is in my, oop, I'm sorry, in the photographs, the pictures on the same page of the whiteboard. Order wood chips, antibiotics, order, uh, different things, a folding table, lights for plants, move sunrise holdbacks.
Tom, you still have that picture of the bicycle?
I'm still looking for the bicycle.
Can you tell what room it is?
Okay, I see the picture of the bicycle.
Yes. What was the significance of that?
That shows a hole in the wall between the house and the garage area, where some type of work had would, had been done, and when you're opening up walls in a assembly that's supposed to be fire-rated, there's supposed to be a building permit.
What room is that in?
That's the room where the business cards were on the table.
Okay.
So the reason I took that was building code issues, not the business.
So there was the basement, there was the garage, there was, I think you had either said last time, or, and the picture showed that some of the shipping materials, I think, were in that same room? The room that had the?
The shipping materials were in, uh, as I remember, there were shipping materials in the garage, and there were shipping materials in that room where the business cards and other things were.
And the envelopes and?
There was another room with a lot of boxes. I did not open any boxes to determine whether they were business-related or personal property of the homeowners.
Yeah. I think I saw a picture in there, too, that was maybe from the outside looking into a room, and it, I, I think I remember the room had somewhat of a, if I'm remembering, maybe a brightly colored wall, or a pastel colored wall, but it looked like a, a light, an umbrella-type item where you might take pictures, photographs?
Well, they did have a room set up with that photo equipment, but I did not take pictures of that room, because that was beyond the bathroom, in an area where they had a kitchen, a bathroom, then that room with the photographic equipment setup.
I think that showed up in one of the pictures, again, from the outside, kind of, it was in the background.
I don't remember taking any pictures in that part of the house.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
When I went into the bedroom area, they had a room set up with equipment.
No, not that one.
There's, uh, there's one here that shows, uh, kitchen cabinets, and some storage shelving on the left side of the room. And it looks as though it's a plastic grate. It's closed, it's hanging over a door, an opening in the wall. I was just wondering what the significance was.
Could I just, can I?
Yes.
Go see that one?
Yes, please.
May help me find it in my packet?
Anybody?
That's a kitchen area that they had added, again, the building permit, there was no permit or request for inspections during the building stuff. I took it just to document that there was building permit required work done without a permit. The plastic that was hanging to the left of that separated the room that they keep the insects.
Yeah, this is the picture right here. Photography equipment. I don't know how to descri, I don't know how, it's not labeled in any way, though. Gosh. He, he didn't, he didn't go in the room, so.
If you wouldn't mind?
It's a picture from the outside, though.
I, I'd be curious, what, what was the, the reason for that picture, of the top one?
This is that room, I think you said you didn't go in?
Yeah, that's the room that the photographs, the equipment was set up in, I didn't remember taking a photo of it, but I obviously did. I didn't go into the room, though. That's the assistant animal control officer, and I'd seen the, the equipment. On their website, I've seen several professional photographs of the animals, so.
Okay. Do you, are there any questions, zoning enforcement officer? Just wanted to reiterate, how many, um, dragons did you? Did you have a number on how many dragons?
I did not count the dragons. While I was there, I was looking for evidence of a business being run out of the property. I was looking for building code violations. Uh, we had animal control officers there, they were documenting the numbers of animals and types of animals. That wasn't my specialty.
Okay. And I know you took a rough estimate before, you had thought that it was, I, I remember the numbers, fifty-six percent you thought of the property was being used for the home occupation. And there was discussion about how you had arrived at that?
Yes.
And you had taken, um, I think, that was at the property record card, and?
Yes, I took a, a record from the assessor's office, and noted the rooms that I did not count the room that the photography equipment was in. Again, I didn't go in, and I saw the equipment from outside, but I didn't know anything else, and I was trying to focus on the business and the, um, building code violations. We did enter, we went up to the second floor, and we verified that there were bedrooms. I took no photos of bedrooms, I felt that that was unnecessary for what we were looking at. So I didn't count those in my calculations.
How many bedrooms on the second floor?
I believe there were three.
And how many rooms on the first floor?
One, two, three, four, five rooms plus the garage area.
Okay.
To my rec, again, I don't count bathrooms as rooms.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
I guess the, the only other question I go back to the earlier presentation that you made, when you calculated out the square footage of livable space, or whatever you're entitled to, to count out, um, as far as habitable space, I guess. Uh, it includes, again, just a synopsis of all the bedrooms, kitchens, living room, dining room, et cetera, et cetera, bathrooms are excluded. Did you include the ba, the basement and the garage as part of that calculation?
For, for the business calculation, I included the basement, because the turtles, the computer and table, and bedding materials and other stuff that I believed could be associated with the business
Okay.
were stored in there. There were personal things in there, washer dryer, those kinds of things, I didn't try to break out those areas, you know? Uh, I tried to stick with, is a room being used more for business or more for a home? And if it was, it appeared to me that it was business-related, and the room that had the table with the business cards in the mail had no other furniture in there, or signs that they were using it as a sitting room, a dining room. So I didn't.
And the, and the garage space itself, was that included as?
Yes, the garage area is, there's no ability to cut, put any vehicles in there.
Okay.
They've closed up the garage door, so when, uh, chief, deputy chief seller says that there were two means of egress, and one of them's a garage door, the garage doors were not operable, they'd been covered with insulation. And by building code, a garage door is not considered a means of egress.
Okay, I'll say.
I have a few questions. Um, Mr. Lancyani, how do you differentiate whether a room is being used for business purposes or residential purposes?
I looked at rooms that had household furniture, bedroom equipment, a kitchen that has a stove, those types of things, and said, that was a part of a normal home. When I saw a terrarium with a lot of turtles in it, and a computer table with notepads and other equipment that appeared to myself to be being associated with the business, I included them. Again, as I stated, the room that had the big table with their shipping stuff, their business cards, their mail, but no other things that I would anticipate seeing in a normal home to be part of the business space. The area of the garage, which was used exclusively, in my opinion, as the breeding area and work area, I counted as the business space.
So i- i- if I have a residential home, am I not allowed to have a notepad?
You're certainly allowed to have a notepad at your home.
How, how do you differentiate whether it's a residential notepad or a commercial use notepad?
When I saw evidence that it was related to the business car, the business cards, the shipping equipment with labels, et cetera, for here be dragons, I thought that, oh, that was probably associated with the business, here be dragons, more than with the house.
Did you read what was on the notepad?
I did not read all of it, there was memo, there were notes about the different animals and things, as best I can remember.
So, so you can't be sure if it was related to their home, or if it was related to the business?
I cannot tell you what every word on the notepad was, so I cannot tell you that they couldn't have been writing their grocery list in between the names of their dragons, or the antibiotics that they would have been ordering for their dragons, and which percentage of that would have been for a normal home, and which of that would have been for a business.
So then, if, if you go to the photo of the kitchen table, which has the mail, the business cards, um?
Okay. That table was not located in the kitchen.
Okay.
But, yes, it was a table, as I have seen some people use in their kitchen, it's a table, as I've seen people use in a conference room between their offices in a business complex.
Do you know whether the owners of the property dine at this table?
I do not, there was other areas where the food preparation, et cetera, was.
Do you consider the flowers on the table to be associated with the business?
Uh, it's not unusual for a business to have flowers and other plants in the business for ambiance or other purposes.
Do you know if they allow the general public to enter their home as part of the business?
I do not, I believe that, I do not know for a fact whether they do or not. They had stated that they don't let John Q. Public in, that they conduct their business by shipping the animals by carrier.
Are the coasters on the kitchen table, or the, the brown table, I should say, uh, part of the business?
I did not get into the minutia whether a coaster would be more appropriate at a dining room table, or as other gentlemen are using here, coasters in a business setting to keep their beverages from staining the counters.
And did you go through all the mail on the table to see whether it was related to the business or not, or if it was personal mail?
I did not go through it all, the letter on top was to here be dragons.
I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I'll give you back your.
Oh, yes, thank you.
All right, so at this point, um, uh...
All right, so at this point, I was going to open it up to the board to ask additional questions as this is a continuation, not necessarily to the inspectors that are here. I know I had some questions from last time that I wanted to ask. I guess after we ask questions, we'll give one last opportunity for anyone in attendance. And then after that, we would close the public hearing and there'd be no more input. So this would be the opportunity to get the last amount of input from anyone in attendance.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, also the applicants also have an opportunity to testify.
I'm sorry, yes. I should have stated that probably from the beginning, that normally, being a continuation, I didn't think of it, but normally we give the applicants an opportunity to give more of the information of what they have or to state their case. You could do that now or you could wait till later?
I think at this time, we're all set and satisfied.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'll open it up to the board. Tom, do you have any other questions?
I think Pirate was already addressed. It's more of a question on customer traffic. I know that the, or it's been reported that no customers are allowed to come to the property. So for all pickups and any returns and any exchange of product or currency is all done through the mail? There's no ability for anybody to come to the site?
No.
Never?
No, it's not open to the general public.
Okay, do you publish your address on your, on your, any of your postings or your mailings or?
No.
And do you use mailings or do you just do the internet?
They use the internet.
Okay, so you're the spokesman for the?
I represent them.
Pardon?
I said I represent them.
Okay, so. You're representing that there's absolutely no, no contact with the customer except through electronic communication?
I don't know if you guys use telephone, telephone, email, but not in-person contact.
Okay.
I'm all set, Tom?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Al?
No, I have no questions.
No questions? Steven?
Do we have a business certificate at that property?
I don't know.
Okay.
I think you'd have to ask one of your witnesses.
So I'll jump to the next question. You have an employee. I'm assuming what you guys are running a business there. Do you have insurance for the property and your business?
Yes, property's insured.
All right, is it insured under a business name or is it just regular insurance for the residential?
Does it matter?
Well, sure, especially if you're running a business out of it. And I'm just wondering, I'll go to the next level, if the insurance company had an inspector come down to inspect that property? Even if you're personal insurance on the house? Did they come out and look at the house knowing that you are running a business? Because for God forbid, if something happens, the insurance could be denied.
And I don't see how the insurance is relevant. That would be.
Well, it is.
That would be a personal choice as to whether or not.
You're saying you're running a business.
And I believe.
Are you running a business?
Excuse me, may I finish, please?
No, you didn't let me finish.
You interrupted me.
Oh, are they running a business?
Absolutely.
Okay, do you have insurance for that business, liability now since you have an employee?
Are they required to? What type of insurance?
Yeah, they have workers' comp as one of them.
Is that required for one employee?
Liability.
If I'm self-employed, am I required to have workers' comp insurance?
For yourself, no. If you're paying an employee.
Are you aware of any limits regarding workers' comp and how many employees?
We could go back and forth and find out all the time, but what I'm saying is you're running a business and if you have regular insurance.
I can confirm they have workers' comp insurance.
Well, do you have the documentation?
Why would we need to submit that?
Well, I take that as a no.
How would that be relevant to zoning?
Well, you're running a business in a residential area.
So the issue.
We don't even know if you have a business certificate, so if you don't, then that's illegal.
Well, if I may, through the chair, Mary, I think you had checked on that issue that the clerk's office did not have a business certificate in their name?
To my knowledge, there is no business certificate.
I apologize, I just thought maybe we could more get to the point, because I think Mary researched that issue before.
Yeah, I remember.
And I think she also researched that the tax collector does not have any filings on the business's assets, equipment, whatnot. And unless maybe you could correct that?
I'm not aware.
Okay.
All right, I got one more question. That, you know the five categories of agriculture? Well, you say it falls under agriculture, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I don't really understand the question, five categories of agriculture, but.
That defines agriculture.
Okay.
All right, so agrimony deals with soil conditions. Horticultural deals with fruits, veggies, omint- omintonal crops. Agriculture engineering deals with equipment, machines, also developing new equipment, you know, for various problems in the agricultural field. Then you have agriculture economics, which deals with the business of farming. Then you have animal science, which deals in breeding and caring of animals specific for purposes such as their meat and their fur. So there's five categories, and if you're saying you're running an agriculture, under agriculture, you should know that.
I previously cited the case law, which supports.
No, do you know the definition of agriculture?
Absolutely.
I just told you.
Okay.
But you didn't know.
I'm not going to argue with you over this.
No, but I'm saying you didn't know. You don't do this, but I'm just saying you didn't know.
Sure, sure, if that's your opinion.
No, it's not my opinion.
I don't know if you read my brief or not. I know last time you didn't.
Well, we got all board members here and everybody has an opinion.
Yeah.
Just like, just like the Supreme Court.
Absolutely.
Nine judges, nine different opinions.
Yeah, you don't have your robe on today.
All right, do you have any other questions?
Maybe I should, huh?
Maybe.
Do you have other questions, Steven?
No, I'll let, well, Al's all set, so. Yeah, I could keep on going, but no, I'm all set.
Well, if you have any other questions.
All right. When Assistant Chief Sellers came up, right, me concerned, no fire extinguishers. So same thing, God forbid you had a fire and your employee's there and he's caught in a corner, he becomes toast. Now, you guys, you weren't even thinking about the safety part of it.
So was that part of the citation?
No, I asked. Sure. It was not part of the citation. It is not required to have a fire extinguisher in a residential structure. Okay. It is suggested it's not required. In businesses, it is, though. Businesses, it's required to have a fire extinguisher every seventy-five feet by NFPA. Is it required to have exit signs in a business? Yes, under the building code. Okay, so I'm all set there?
Okay, I'll sit.
David?
I'm all set, thank you.
You're all set? All right, to the applicants. I think we talked last time, there was two hundred dragons was the estimate of what you have at any time or approximately? And I think we had said a hundred and twenty were the sub-adults and there were eighty that were the adults?
I believe what we said was proprietary.
Maybe, was that the, I remember something being proprietary. Was that the mix of whether the males, how many males and how many females was proprietary?
How many breeders we have, how many we produce, how many we have at any given time, how many we sell, proprietary?
Okay, how many of them are pets?
They all belong to me, they are my pets. Until one of them is sold and leaves the property, they belong to me under the law.
Okay. Again, I wrote these numbers down. I, I don't think I would have, I guess the number, whether it's what the mix is, is, yeah. So proprietary, but it is, it is kind of important from a standpoint of, so some number of pets. I thought the number last time was stated to be eighty, or maybe it was eighty adults, but. Do you keep, do you, do you keep the pets and the others in different places or are they all mixed together?
They're all my pets.
All your pets?
They're all kept together.
So they're all pets until you sell them?
Yes, they belong to me. There is no definition of pet that I'm aware of in the law. They are animals and they belong to me, they're my pets.
All right, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, for the record, please, can I have this applicant's name? Thank you.
Go ahead, David. And Mr. Fleming, are all of the turtles your pets?
Yes.
Until you sell them?
Well, we've never sold any of them, but yes.
Until, okay. So, all right, so are all of the animals that are in there are your pets? Okay, I think I understand your point.
I have a question, if you don't mind interrupting.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Building inspector indicated, or maybe the animal control, that a turtle has some turtle eggs. So if you've got thirty turtles and now you've got ten eggs, now you've got forty turtles, what are you doing the extra ten turtles?
I believe, I believe the testimony of the animal control officer was that she did not observe turtle eggs.
She did not.
She did not? No. Well, maybe it was the lizards.
Okay.
David, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, have any of the dragons, do they ever get loose? Make it outside their cage?
No.
Okay. The animal trap that was in the backyard, can I ask what that was for?
It's a have-a-hart trap.
Right, but is it, has there been instances of predatory animals coming around? Maybe because they scent something or smell something or?
It was for a woodchuck.
Woodchuck? Okay.
I think we can all agree that those are wreaking havoc on gardens right now.
And rabbits. I'm sorry, yes, could you come up, please?
I would just like to just. We did observe one of the bearded dragons loose when we were there.
Where, what do you mean by loose?
It got loose from the cage.
In the garage?
In the garage area where most of them are, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Which, which date was that?
Do you ever take the pets out and let them run around the house? Or like if they're your pets, do you treat them differently or?
They're dogs, they don't have like free reign of the house, but yes, they get handled, they get taken out.
Okay. And do you keep the, do the males and the females stay together or do they have to be kept separate?
They are put together to breed and that's it.
That's it? What's the most amount of dragons you can keep in one enclosure?
Entirely depends on the size, are they adults, are they babies, how big is the enclosure, what kind it is? It's like asking, how many kids can you fit in a school?
Right, so for the.
How big is the school?
Okay, so for the adults, how many of the adult dragons?
We have a variety of sizes and types of cages.
Okay, so let's say those, are you familiar with that picture that had the five stack of the wooden? How many in each of those? Because it looked to me from the picture.
Usually if they're females, up to three.
Okay, approximately three adults could be in one of those, in one of those levels?
Normally, yeah.
Okay. And if they're a lot younger, I, I think I wrote this down from last time, they're called sub-adults. Is that the?
They start off as hatchlings. Hatchlings of juveniles, then eventually we'd call them sub-adults and adults.
Okay, so there's like four stages. And the, the picture showed a number of bins in the garage, which they said these are for the feeder insects. I think there was a, maybe like a wooden shelving system that had these gray colored bins on. And how many bins are there? Somebody say last time there was ten, approximately ten?
There are any changes over time, I don't know, six, seven? Seven right now.
And there was lettering on the front of one of those that said, like an M and an F and it had a count. I'm assuming that was male and female and that was the count of?
Those bins are very old, so we can't testify to the writing on them, it's not functional.
So it could have been from the past writing or something?
It's some old writing that is still there.
Okay. The Board of Health, one of their pictures did show the, some unidentified larvae on the walls. Do you have, do you know what that was or is that a common occurrence or?
Pantry moths.
What is that, a pantry moth, like a?
You ever bought flour, you open it and there's little pieces of silk in it, those are pantry moths.
They appear big.
Usually they get into your house from the grocery store, you buy some dry goods, they come home with you.
All right.
And then if it sits in the back of your pantry too long, you end up with little gray moths flying around your house.
All right. I don't think I had any other questions there. All right, so if there's no other questions, I guess I'm going to look for a motion to close the public hearing. At that point, we wouldn't be able to take any more input. The board would then discuss in open meeting what our deliberations are. So if there's no other questions, nobody else wants to make a statement, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like a motion to close the public hearing regarding fifty-nine Quoburg, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second in the vote, Tom?
Yes.
Al?
No.
Steven?
Yes.
David?
Am I allowed to ask Al why?
Al? Sure.
I had a question that I wanted to ask.
Then, then I would say no, he should ask his question.
I withdraw my, my motion.
Well, I mean, do you want your question to be part of the deliberations we have or is it a question that you're looking for some input from other than the board?
No, it's from the applicant, or the lawyer for the pilot here.
Okay, so I guess we shouldn't close the public hearing then. Do you want to go ahead and ask your question?
In section three point eight, animals or birds other than customary household pets are excluded from all districts except upon brand and special permit by the board or selectmen. What's your defense for that?
It's explained in my brief.
Well, I didn't read your brief, I'm asking you.
You didn't read my brief?
No.
Okay, it's in my brief.
I just want your question answered.
I'm telling you it's in my brief.
So you, you don't want to provide an answer?
I did provide you an answer.
He's asking if you would verbally?
I don't see the need to.
So you're saying, no, I'm not going to provide you with an answer?
I did provide you with an answer, it's in, I'm not having this fight with you again.
No, 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 I'm, I'm.
And please don't mischaracterize it.
I'm not mischaracterizing anything. He asked you to give him an answer and you're letting him know that I will not because I gave it before in writing and I will not allow it to be heard verbally.
Again, you're exaggerating the situation.
No, I think I have it very accurate.
The answer has been provided in the brief and he just acknowledged that he did not read the materials, so I don't even know how you guys could be able to vote on this tonight.
It appears that she does not want to provide you with the answer.
Okay, did you have any other questions, Al, or follow-on question?
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. So are we ready to close the public hearing then? Or is there, are there any other questions? Okay, so.
One quick one.
Go ahead, Steven.
Yeah, we talked about waste, animal feces. The turtles and the lizards produce salmonella and pinworms. Now, you indicated before that that waste was thrown into the trash of the turno, the turno trash pickup. Now, I'm not clear, I don't know if this should be, or is there out there a hazmat? Now, I'm not clear, I don't know if this should be, or is there out there a hazmat bag where you'd have to put this in? Because by putting it into the trash. That you could be contaminating.
Was this cited by any of your inspectors?
No, I'm just, I've given you my opinion.
Okay.
That's what I'm up here for.
Then I, if it wasn't cited, then my clients don't need to answer.
Do you give your opinion? I give my opinion.
That's fine.
So I'm just letting it know, cause it's on record. That disposable of this waste. Since you're considering, it's a business, an agriculture business, which. You know, you couldn't even tell me the five categories are an agriculture business. But pinworm and salmonella, when it goes into a trash. And if you're indicating it's a business. It's gonna be totally different than the household trash going in that bucket.
So there was no citations regarding any disposable waste, so right now you were going outside the scope of your authority?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Ask La Terno, when you, when you dump the trash, ask them if you could dump, uh, li- uh, feces from a lizard and whatever.
I don't know who La Terno is.
Yeah, well, if they do, that's who picks up the trash.
I, I, I don't see La Terno here testifying tonight, so.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
No, I'm, I'm all set.
Okay, so I would ask again for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to reclose the public hearing regarding fifty-nine Quo Baguette.
A second.
And a second, okay, so now we would have the vote on closing the public hearing. Tom?
Yes.
Al?
No.
Steven?
Yes.
David?
Well, I, um, if, if Al still has questions, then, then I think they need to be asked so he can get his answers.
I've, I've asked the question I wanted to ask, but I didn't get an answer.
We can have further deliberations amongst the board after we close the public hearing. But if, you know, again, it's just, you can't have input from.
Uh, um, Al, you, you have asked all the questions you wanted to ask?
Asked a question, I have some answers.
Okay, then I, I would vote in.
They don't have it.
Okay, and I vote yes also, so the public hearing is closed, no more testimony from people in attendance. Uh, the board is being asked to consider two, um, as two, an appeal of two cease and desist orders. One was accord, um, so this is what we need to deliberate on, um, make a decision on. Uh, these will be two separate votes, number one, accordingly, activities at the property constitute a violation of the Town of Oxford zoning bylaw, chapter three, section two dot O, home occupations. Sections two dot one three and two dot one six of chapter three prohibit home occupations in all districts which may create a hazard to person or property, or become a nuisance, and which uses more than twenty-five percent of the net floor area of the dwelling. I'd like to do these separately, so we can, we can, why don't we start our deliberations on that one?
Um, I, I have, I have a question on that.
Yes.
Wh- whether that's the, wh- whether we should, we should approach it that way, or first, um, whether, um, whether bearded dragons, uh, are customary household pets, or you know, so we have counsel here, um.
Well, that's the second violation that was cited, so they, there do need to be two separate votes. I don't know that it matters the order which we vote on those, uh, deliberation, and I'll take your input if there's.
I, I'd like to have some input on that.
Okay, through you, Mr. Chairman. What I would suggest is that the board consider first whether, um, the activities being performed at the property are agriculture under your bylaws. And whether they would be allowed as an agricultural use under your bylaws. If you find that they don't, you can consider, um, whether or not they would be entitled to the agricultural exemption under the zoning act. And if you find that they wouldn't, um, you go on to consider whether these are customary household pets. And whether they would require, uh, a permit?
All right, I'm sorry.
Sure, I can go slower.
Yes, I think you're gonna have to, so.
You know, so, let's just take them one at a time, and, and then under each category, we can have our discussions. And then once we maybe hopefully make a decision on that, we can move to the next category. So the first category, I'm sorry, counsel?
Sure, so the applicants have alleged that they are, uh, entitled to perform the activity at the residence because it is agricultural activities and agriculture is allowed in their zoning district under the bylaws. So in my opinion, um, it would be prudent for the board to discuss whether this is agriculture, um, in, under your bylaws, and as the board considers agriculture in town.
But that's not a vote, that would be a, that would be, we're not voting on that, right?
Well, it would be a finding.
It would be a finding, if you determine that it is agriculture as they're alleging, it would go to whether or not this use is permitted, which is what the applicants have alleged.
And how does that tie in? Does that tie in with the first, or the second, or both? The, the two, I thought we had to, maybe I misunderstood this, but I thought the last time it was discussed that in the zoning enforcement officer's cease and desist order, there was two specific references that we had to vote on.
So the zoning enforcement officer has found that the, the use category is home occupation for a business rather than an agricultural use. Um, and so what the applicants are saying is that this is not a home occupation, that this is agricultural, which is allowed under your bylaws. So if the board would consider whether or not this is agriculture, as the applicants have alleged, they do think that that's relevant to your decision today. Um, they're also alleging it's agriculture under the zoning act, and therefore exempt from, uh, any bylaws that would prohibit or, or regulate it in that area that the zoning enforcement officer is claiming, uh, your bylaws do.
Okay.
Well, I, you know, if we could open up for discussion on whether the breeding, raising, keeping, and selling of bearded dragons constitutes agriculture?
Sure, and then, then my question after that, and I'm, I'm willing to do that, but then how does, how do we get back to? And what do we have to vote on, and, and is, we, we can deliberate that, we can talk about our findings. But then, at some point, we need to have two separate votes, is that correct, for these two items?
You can have two separate votes, whether to uphold, after you deliberate, you could vote whether to uphold the zoning enforcement officer's finding that this is an unlawful home occupation under the zoning bylaws, and then also, um, whether to uphold or, 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 um, overrule the, the zoning enforcement officer's findings, that this, the keeping of these bearded dragons and turtles requires a permit under the bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Move it started off, David?
Well, I, I personally do not see the breeding, raising, keeping, and sale of bearded dragons, um, which are more exotic pets as agricultural activity. Certainly not what, um, uh, this area would consider to be agricultural activity. I, I don't know if any other members of the board would, uh, would want to chime in on their thoughts.
Well, when I heard the, the term livestock, or agriculture, I thought of farm animals. And to me, farm animals are, you know, cows, chickens, uh, pigs, uh.
Food products? Or, 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 uh, use in some other farming activity?
I guess to me, it seems mostly food when I think of livestock or farm animals, maybe horses to work on the farm, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I have very similar thoughts.
Leather belts.
I'm sorry?
Leather belts come from cattle. So you figure what's not, what's utilized from, from the, uh, in the agriculture industry?
So in, in other words, animals that are made use of in other products?
Yeah, the science of, uh, you know, I was doing the research on agriculture, but the science of cultivating the ground, harvesting crops, rearing and managing livestock, farming and ranching. And, you know, you go back up into the five categories of agriculture, and that's what it pertains to. They have those five categories, all from raising, managing, what you use, use them for.
I, I don't consider reptiles, whether it was lizard, snakes, anything like a reptile, alligator. That's just not, that's not standard farming in this area, and probably wasn't envisioned as part of a zoning.
Maybe in some part of the world.
Sure. I mean, I, I also think that, um, the number, the number does not constitute being customary household pets. I think two hundred is, it, it seems to me that it's clearly set up as a business. Not necessarily as, you know, it's pets and it's, if they have offspring, we sell them, I think it was designed as a business to breed and, and sell the offspring.
Yeah, I, I really don't credit the testimony that, um, all of these animals are their pets. Um, they're their pets until they realize that they can be sold and, and money received. And that happens on a continual basis, those aren't pets. Those are animals raised, um, because that's their widget to take off the shelf.
Al, yes?
On the rigid definition that I have from Webster's dictionary.
Okay, I was wondering why you were carrying that around.
Back to us. This is agriculture. Science of, uh, cultivating a soil, producing crops and raising livestock. In varying degrees, the preparation of these products for man's use and their disposal as by marketing. And plainly, I think that meets the definition of agriculture, what they're doing. I have no question in that. I think they have a lot of other violations that I would have questioned, but that's not coming before this board for us to make a decision. I don't think we should have even allowed some of that stuff to even be brought up here.
Okay, so your contention is that it is agriculture?
I have no question it's agriculture. In the background, even further from that, from the definition in the book. The original zoning that we adopted in nineteen seventy-one.
Okay.
That was the first zoning that we defined, other than having lot sizes from the fifties, but having, uh, definitions of where it was going, what was being held. That particular property that they're at was zoned in the residential district, they had four districts, back then it was zoned residential. And the bylaws at that time.
This was, I'm sorry, Al, you said this was nineteen seventy-something?
Early.
When was that neighborhood built, probably in the fifties?
Yeah, seventies, we put in the first bylaws. And that bylaw did not allow farming as a use. But that use was allowed in the suburban zone, farming or agriculture, they both mean the same.
Would, would that be, you think, because of the size of lots?
Well, that's what I was getting at, now the state came in with rules after that. And they said the town can adopt rules and outlaw this stuff. They also added in there, the town can put in regulations such as five acres for farm, or agriculture. If we were, when we changed the law in eighty-seven. Threw out the old law completely, which I wasn't in agreement with back then, but we adopted a new set of bylaws in eighty-seven. In eighty-seven, the subject property was still in the residential, but it was R three, and you had more zones by then. And the use of, allowed, was changed to allow agricultural as a permitted use, but did not allow roadside stands to sell products. At that time, when we adopted that, or any later time. We were allowed to put in the regulations under the state code that we could require that zone. It allowed use only if they had five acres. We didn't do that. I don't know what we would say if somebody in some neighborhood had a house and they wanted to put cows out in there, whether they were running a farm or not. I mean, I think we should have put whatever was allowed, to keep it residential areas residential. But in not doing that, along comes these people, and I think they're entitled to meet the zoning. And the zoning seems to say that that's allowed.
Agriculture.
Yeah, and the definition from the book dictionary I see. And if you follow it one step further, after looking up one of the words in there that they had, clearly it pertains to something like that. Animals, basically, that, that's farming, and farming is same as agriculture.
Well, I, 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 I hear what you're saying, I disagree because of the nature of what they're doing. It's, it's an exotic pet. It's not, okay, I'm gonna raise, uh, some dogs, or some cats, or, uh, some chickens, or, um, you know, it's, it's more of an exotic pet. So I, 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 I'm troubled with that distinction.
But many times, getting to whether it's exotic or farming. I mean, around the world, some of these things, lizards and guanas, that they use for food.
Sure, but we're being asked to decide.
It's here, looking here.
Yeah, but we're looking here.
Well, people come here from all over the world. Now they don't even have to stop at the borders, but that's another problem. However, if I, and I went on the internet, which was the first thing I did. And I couldn't believe how big these pets are, uh, not big in size, big in terms of how many people are selling cages farm, and, and the other support systems farm, I guess food farm. It's still big, big, much bigger than I ever thought it would be. So I, I think it's, if you looked on the internet and saw all the people, there are at least fifty ads on there from different sources. And to me, it, it kicked it over in a whole nother thing, this is really common, a lot in common, and I would have ever anticipated seeing. Probably that's why they have a business selling them, but.
Well, I think they have a business selling it because they can make money off of it. Uh, you know, that's why they have the business, but the question still becomes, is, are those, are all those actions or activities with bearded dragons agriculture here? Not in some other, you know, area of the world, or even area of the country for that matter, but here?
Yeah. My feeling is, whether it was anywhere in the world, it wouldn't matter to me. I would feel the same way.
No, I, I, I respect that.
It's agriculture.
All right, so that's, we have mixed, uh, mixed opinions on the agriculture piece.
We have down on Cheltenham Street someone that raises llamas, is that exotic? It's only done in Peru, as far as I know. This is how the world changes, we've got people coming here.
Is that, is that the same zoning district? Is that the same zoning district?
No.
All right, and they haven't been brought before us?
One of the things that I read.
No, 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 the, 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 the llama, oh, um. Oh, that's right, the arrow packers. The, um, they, they, they're not before us.
That was another difference because they were so exotic.
Um, if I may, Mr. Chairman to counsel. Would you recommend that we continue on discussing all of the other various things? Or we take a vote as to the issue of agriculture, because then things will flow from that decision?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it's the board's preference, there's no right or what.
Yeah, I would think we take a vote on, um, the applicant's appeal, which is to overturn the zoning enforcement officer's cease and desist. So as I understood from the beginning, we had two specific votes, I don't think we need to vote. I think it's clear, the opinions of the board, there are differing opinions on, on the question of agriculture, but you know, the, the zoning enforcement cease and desist was stating that the home occupations that could create a hazard to person or property, or become. or become a nuisance, and if it uses more than twenty-five percent of the net floor area of the dwelling. This is, this is what was used to, to affect the cease and desist. This, along with the other one, stating that they were in violation because they had more than, you know, seven animals. You know, and, and it certainly doesn't say, you know, bearded dragons. It's, this initially was around egg-laying chickens, but it does say all other animals. So again, the, the belief was from zoning enforcement, this was other than customary household pets. So if that was the case, it needed a special permit. The applicants didn't agree with that, I believe. And as a result, that's why the cease and desist was, was issued. So I think these are the two items we have to vote on. I'd like to discuss those, but.
Um, I, I haven't heard from Tom as to his thoughts on whether the use in his mind constitutes agriculture. And I, I would like to get a good sense from everyone.
It's my opinion that the, the applicant's defense or opinion that this is used as agriculture, I think it's just a matter of rhetoric. They're calling these animals pets. I don't know of very many individuals that would breed a hundred or two hundred living beings and call them their pets and just have them available for market. So I think that calling them pets is just a veil for product. And because they have a product and they have a regular shipping routine and they have a method of doing business to sell their pets. And I use the term pets loosely is what they call pets. They're, they're actually breeders and what they are is product. And so therefore, I don't think that they're allowed that exemption of, of, of calling them pets. So therefore, they're doing a, they're performing agriculture in an area that's not zoned and unpermitted.
All right, so from a standpoint of the home occupation, again, the cease and desist thought that this could create a hazard to person or property or nuisance and use more than twenty-five percent. What I saw, again, I don't know if fifty-six percent is accurate to the percent, but it seemed to me, based on the number of rooms that were involved, whether it's the garage, the basement, maybe another room where they're, maybe doing photography, another room where they're doing their shipping. It seems to me it's more than twenty-five percent of the dwelling. So the bylaw says twenty-five percent. I also think there's an intent in the bylaw that says, and I, I circled it here, but it's to exclude commercial and industrial uses. This is for R three, which are incompatible with a residential environment. And I think, I think this is a home occupation business. I think it's in a dense residential environment. And I think it's not really with the intent of the bylaw. It's against the intent of the bylaw. I think it has the potential to be a nuisance. Whether the odors were not detectable outside. So maybe, maybe odors aren't the nuisance, but there is concern about whether the dragons could get away, whether insects could get out. I know it was stated in, I think, the last, the first meetings, information that the belief was that they would not live for very long outside of that environment. We did hear that, I think, tonight, that the basking areas are a hundred degrees. But, you know, you have hot days like this. This seems to be fairly close to, like we've had this week, fairly close to what that environment is, humid and warm. It seems that they, they possibly could get out. And, and again, it's a very dense residential neighborhood. So I, I don't, I don't find it compatible. I think it has the potential to be a nuisance in that area. And I do find that it's, it seems to me from all the pictures and the testimony that it's more than twenty-five percent of the property.
I would echo those feelings and thoughts, but I would even go a step further. And that the use creates a hazard in that area, a fire hazard. We heard testimony about the use, the improper use of all the extension cords. And the heat lamps in very close proximity to the, I apologize, brush.
Leaves brush.
Yeah.
Pet, I forget what they call it, but.
Combustible materials. So I, I, I think beyond the nuisance, it, it creates a hazard in the neighborhood that is not one that should be allowed.
Any other thoughts on that? Okay, how about the idea of chapter three, section three dot eight, that's saying egg-laying? This is a, I think, a fairly recent addition to the bylaw. Was initially put in around, I think, specifically to allow people to have chickens and ducks. But it kind of encompasses more than that and it tries to regulate the numbers that people would have. So egg-laying chickens and ducks, six or under total chickens and ducks, are excluded from all districts except by grant of a license by the Board of Selectmen. All other animals or birds, including egg-laying chickens and ducks in quantities of seven or over, other than customary household pets, are excluded from all districts upon a grant of a special permit by the Board of Selectmen. So any thoughts on whether you think what they have is considered customary household pets? Or, you know, is the two hundred, does it fall into the category here that it's more than seven?
Um, my thoughts are they are not customary household pets. People might have them, but I don't view that as customary. It's not a dog, it's not a cat, it's not, what else do people have? It's not, it's not a bird. These are exotic reptiles.
I think I might like to pipe in on that as well. Although I think that a bearded dragon probably could be, could constitute a pet. But the sheer number takes them out of the realm of a pet and into the realm of a commercial operation.
And there's some distinctions there. Because, you know, a customary household pet, they might be a pet. Are they a customary household pet? The sheer number of them, as you, as you pointed out, takes it out of being a pet. Well, we heard testimony that all the bearded dragons are my pets. Well, I don't, I've never met a person that had, that, that raised pets for the sole purpose of selling them. I don't think that that makes them a pet. I think that that takes it well beyond that, that border, if you will.
Rhetoric.
Yes.
On the definition of a pet.
Yes, Al?
I look at it and read this whole paragraph as very poorly written. Because you can't read it and understand it, and that can make more than one interpretation of it. But when I read it, customary household pets, they're not these people's pets that this is referring to. In general, are they ordinary customary, customary household pets? And from what I see on the internet, they are customary household pets. I mean, we've had a lot of pets in my lifetime. Besides the dogs and cats, when we had the, growing up in Oxford, and we had four thousand people living here. I mean, I had turtles, rabbits. Would you consider they ordinary household pets? I don't know. Rabbits don't run around the house, but we had them. Everybody had them.
Well, I, I think the distinction, Al, is zoning is local. The world wide web is worldwide. And I, and I think you're overlooking that distinction.
I'm, I'm not getting into worldwide.
Well, you, you said on the internet, so that's worldwide.
Well, all the sales were in the United States that I was, oh, northeast of the United States.
But again, zoning is local. And since it's a local zoning regulation, I, I, I ask myself, you know, are bearded dragons usual or normal? I, I forget the exact wording of the regulation, but usual or normal household pets? And I, I personally don't, don't, don't think that to be the case.
I'm looking at whether the bearded dragon is a household pet outside of these people's house.
Locally or nationwide?
I don't agree with them that they have two hundred in their household pets. That I don't agree with, that part of the argument. And I asked them if they found on it, but again, it chose not to.
Al is saying it's interpretation.
I can read it, that household pets are exempt. As a category.
Sorry, go ahead.
Someone, even if one person in the world had it as a household pet, it'd become a household pet. It's that category. It could be read that way.
But, but is that a customary, usual or normal household pet? And I think.
A lot of, they're not wild. I mean, some people have rabbits. They run around my yard. If you have them in my house or in the cage at my yard, that would be different.
Yeah, well, seventy years ago, they ate the rabbits that were running around the yard along with the chickens, so.
Just as a point for clarification, bearded dragons are being sold as customary household pets. Or as, I won't say customary, but they could be unusual household pets. And I don't think that they're really gonna split hairs as far as whether it's unusual or usual.
How about exotic and non-exotic?
Well, again, if pet, if the pet store, which I did some investigating, the pet store down here at the Oxford Crossing is selling bearded dragons, and I did witness a couple of them in the tank or in the terrarium, and they're selling them as, as a household pet. So.
But.
But I, I still stand on my. I still stand on my, my definition, or my, my, my argument that although it can be a single one or two, can be considered a household pet. It's not a hundred or two hundred of them. They're no longer household pets. They now, it's, it's, you know. When does something become a nuisance? The, the animal waste. We go out and one of the things we do, unfortunately, Steve, one of the arguments is that we have a pooper-scooper bylaw that says that if you walk your dog, you'll pick up the poops and they'll put it into a plastic bag and dispose of it as ordinary trash. I haven't seen BFI or LaBeuf or, or Letourneau come out and say, oh, you can't put animal feces in the, in the trash, the household trash anymore. I haven't had DEP say that either. I imagine now the next thing is the quantity. If you find out that a dog kennel was doing it with fifty-five dogs and they were taking all the trash, putting it in a dumpster and it was going in with ordinary household trash, it's a whole different ballgame. Again, one or two animals, it's not a problem. It's two hundred animals or a hundred and fifty animals. It's no longer a pet situation. It's tripped. Tripped the light fantastic, and it's now drawing all kinds of attention to itself.
The sixties reference was, was very nice.
All right, so is there any other points anybody wants to make? Any other? Okay, if not, then we'd be looking for two motions, one at a time. Again, based on the two, the two items that were cited as a cease and desist order. So you should make the motion and state your findings. And then we would look for a second and then we would vote.
Your, your first motion you're looking for was?
So I, again, the order, I don't think it matters here. But the first thing that was stated was chapter three, section two dot O, home occupations prohibits home occupations in all districts which may create a hazard to person or property, becomes a nuisance and which uses more than twenty-five percent of the net floor area. The zoning enforcement officer found they were in violation of this. They are appealing that. So this would be a, a motion to, a motion to overturn or a motion to uphold the zoning enforcement officer's findings. But you should say, you should cite your findings also. Again, this one would be under chapter three, section two, home occupations. This, and sections two dot one three, two dot one six. Do you have a copy of the cease and desist order? It has the information in there. This would be April second from zoning enforcement officer Lanzini. It's a three-page document. Page two at the top of this.
That was the April second?
April second. If you go to page, go to page two at the top of it. The, these are the. Those are the two items. I believe those are the sections that were specifically cited, so. This is what we have to decide, whether to overturn or uphold. Are you able to find that?
Yeah, it's in your, it's in your file.
Do you want me to read that to you or?
Is there a motion that we're looking for?
We are looking for a motion. We have to make a decision. So there's two violations that were cited in the cease and desist. So we should have two separate votes, one on each. The motion, again, should include your findings of what, of what, why you're making the motion on however you make it. And then we can have a second and we can debate that. Do you see, do you have the paperwork? Al, if you're on the letter, it's the top two paragraphs right on where you are right now, on page two. Starts with the word accordingly. You see that? Okay, so those are the two specific areas that were cited. Are there any questions?
Just ask a question?
Sure.
And it's citing home occupations.
I'm sorry, say that again.
It says home occupations. They claim they don't have a home occupation, don't they?
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again, Al.
Well, he's citing that home occupation they're in violation of. I don't think they claim to have a home occupation.
Who doesn't claim? Do the applicants? Yes, but that's the contention. The zoning enforcement officer says that they, that he sees it as a home occupation that's occupying more than twenty-five percent. And that, that those are prohibited in all districts that can create a hazard to person or property and become a nuisance and which uses more than twenty-five percent. So that's what he cited. So that's what being, that's what we're being asked to decide on. I can't make a motion.
Okay, well, you can, but it's okay. I'll, I'll make, I'll try to make a motion and see if we can do it right, the right way. I move that the building inspector's order for a cease and desist of the operation of, at the property at fifty-nine Quobah Gav be upheld at this point, at this time, based on all the evidence that's been presented.
Is this specifically in reference to the first violation or the second violation?
Well, it says the zoning bylaw violation. And that would be that it's a none.
Where are you reading that from? Where are you reading that from? Again, I think we need to have two separate...
I recommend that, well, let's start that again. I support the building inspector's decision that, by the evidence presented, the activities of the property are a violation of the Town of Oxford zoning bylaw, Chapter 3, 2.0, under home occupations, 2.1.3, 2.1.6, of having home occupations in districts that create a hazard to person or property and becomes a nuisance in which there are more than 25% of the net floor area of the dwelling.
So what are your findings? You said you moved to accept?
Accept.
Okay. And what are your findings based on that?
I'm sorry, now I'm lost.
Do you believe he is correct in stating that they're using more than 25%?
Well, that's what I said. Based on the evidence that's been presented, yes, I find that, and I support the building inspector's decision.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a second?
I would second that and I would make it just a bit more detailed that it was more than 25% as you said, and that...
Well, if we're going to amend the motion, we're going to have to vote on an amendment to the motion, right?
Well, like before we vote on the amendment, I can see what the amendment is.
Agreed, agreed. I'm just stating he's...
That the use is more than 25% of the, for the business, and that the use may create a hazard to person, property, or become a nuisance in that residential neighborhood.
So we had a motion, we had a second. So discussion on, it sounds like David wants to amend it and add the...
So I have to withdraw my motion and present the amended...
Well, it's either that or we can just vote on his amended language to add it to the motion.
Can you do that?
Whichever you want. If you want to...
You can piggyback it on, okay.
If you want to withdraw your...
So I second the amendment to my original, my primary vote.
Okay, let's be clear on exactly what you want to add to the motion, David.
That it, that the business makes use of more than 25% of the building and the use may create a hazard to person, to person or property, or become a nuisance.
Okay. Any discussion on anything else anybody wants to change on that? If not, let's vote on the amendment that's being added to the motion. Tom, do you agree to add that to the motion?
I agree to add that to the motion.
Al?
I agree to add it to the motion.
Yes.
Yeah.
Stephen?
Yes, I do agree.
David?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Let's vote on the motion.
I have a question for counsel, if I may.
Sure.
Counsel, is the use, whether it is or is not agricultural, or whether the breeding, raising, keeping, or sale of bearded dragons is not customarily incidental to that residential use? Is that part and parcel of the regulation we are voting on?
In my opinion, yes. The applicant alleges in their appeal that this isn't a home occupation, that this isn't allowed agricultural use. As I read the zoning enforcement officer's cease and desist order, he found that this is in fact a commercial breeding, home occupation, but that it is prohibited under the bylaws because it's more than 25% of the net floor area of the dwelling, and that it also may create a hazard and nuisance. So I would say that yes. In your determination as to whether this is a home occupation prohibited under the bylaw, the board should consider whether or not it's a home occupation or an allowed agricultural use in making their decision.
And if we find in the negative on both of those?
If you find that it's not an agricultural use.
Yes.
And if you find that it's not a home occupation allowed under the bylaw, you would uphold the zoning enforcement officer's order.
I would amend my initial motion to add, to add and clarify that I do not find the use to be agricultural, and that the use that is being made is not customarily incidental to the residential use.
I'm sorry, the use what?
The use that they are making, the breeding, raising, keeping, and sale of bearded dragons, is not customarily incidental to the residential use of the property. And I would add those two things on...
So you want to amend the... All right, so...
You ready? Can we read the...
I think that's what we need to do.
Read the motion with the amendment in total back so that we can...
Yes. Why don't you read the amended total motion?
He's looking at me.
Read the amended total motion back, and then we will vote on this amendment, and then we can vote on the motion. So I cut the last two items that he's saying he does not find the use to be agricultural and the use is not customarily incidental to residential neighborhood, how'd you say?
The residential use of the property.
Okay. And your previous amendment was?
That the use is more than 25% of the property and...
And a nuisance. What about a nuisance?
And the use may, the use that they're making of the property may create a hazard to person or property or become a nuisance.
Okay, so those are the four bullets that he's added to the original motion. And the original motion was, you moved to, you read the stated lines from the cease and desist order, and you moved to uphold the zoning enforcement officer's decision.
Mr. Chairman, if it'd like, I couldn't read it out loud. If someone wants to write it down or re-read or then say so moved.
Please, Mary will write it down.
Okay.
Well, I have it written down. It's just, do you want me to start from where?
If you could read it, that would be helpful to the board because then we're going to vote on the amendment and say that's what we agree the motion is. Then we're going to vote on the motion.
So as I understand it, the motion or the amendment to the motion that's proposed, the full motion would read, "I move that the board find that the use of the property is not agricultural, not customarily incidental to residential use, constitutes more than 25% of the net floor area of the dwelling, may create a hazard to person or property or become a nuisance in violation of Chapter 3, Section 2, Home Occupations, and therefore move to uphold the building commissioner's, excuse me, zoning enforcement officer's cease and desist order as it relates to that section of the bylaw."
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Okay, so now a vote to accept that amended motion.
Thomas Purcell, yes.
Al?
I'm understanding.
Stephen?
Steve Balconis, yes.
David Silverman, yes.
Pete LaFlash, yes. Now, a vote on the actual motion itself now. So we voted to accept the wording, now it's a vote on the motion.
The motion, we'll go back to, the motion is to uphold...
She just, yeah, she just read, yes. The motion is to uphold, so a yes vote would uphold the cease and desist.
So now we're going to just take a vote?
This is the actual vote.
To uphold, yes. Thomas Purcell, yes.
No.
To uphold a building inspector's decision. Steve Balconis, yes.
David Silverman, yes.
Pete LaFlash, yes. Okay. So that's four, and the affirmative, one in the negative, so that is upheld. Now we have the second item that was cited in the cease and desist order. Again, this is the second paragraph on page 2 of the cease and desist order. It says additionally, you're in violation of Chapter 3, Section 3.8 of the town zoning bylaw, which provides egg-laying chickens and ducks, six or under, total chickens and ducks combined are excluded from all districts except upon a grant of the license by the Board of Selectmen. All other animals or birds, including egg-laying chickens and ducks, in quantities of seven or over, other than customary household pets, are excluded from all districts except upon the grant of a special permit by the Board of Selectmen. So do we have a motion on whether to uphold or...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to uphold the decision of the building commissioner's zoning enforcement officer.
Can you state your findings as part of that motion?
That turtles and bearded dragons would be a part of the all other animals or birds, and those are clearly in quantities of seven or over, and that they are not customary household pets in the sheer volume of the number of them.
That's, are there any, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All right. I would call for the vote. This is a vote to withhold, I'm sorry, to uphold the zoning enforcement officer's decision. So again, a yes vote is to uphold.
Thomas Purcell, yes, to uphold the zoning enforcement officer's decision.
Al?
No.
Stephen?
Yes, to uphold the building inspector's decision.
David Silverman, yes.
Pete LaFlash, yes. So again, we have four in the affirmative and one in the negative, so that is upheld. To let you know, there is a 20-day appeal period. I'm sure you know that. We read that at the beginning of the case, so I guess that concludes this case.
I was just going to ask, when I can expect to have it entered into the clerk's office so that we can pick up a copy?
Mary, any idea on the timing of that?
Probably a week and a half, two weeks is my best guess right now. I'll try to do it sooner than that.
No, no, I'm just looking for the timetable. I appreciate it.
Okay. Do we have any other business to discuss tonight?
We have to vote to close the hearing.
I'm sorry?
To close the meeting, that hearing.
Well, only after we're done with other business.
Oh. We have other business.
I just wanted to bring one thing up, just relate, not related to this case, but to the, we had a previous applicant in here that had the pool. And looking at the list of requirements that we had put together as a board many years ago on what was required for paperwork, and I wish I had the paper with me, but it talks about an exclusion if it's a pool or a shed. And I wanted to get the board's take on what they thought that exclusion meant that they didn't have to do. So we talked about, and I think it's in the point that talks about the certified plot plan.
It's in the instructions.
Yeah, I can't find that sheet with me, but do you happen to have that, Mary? I only want to spend five minutes on this, but I just wanted to open it up for future discussion.
I remember when that was incorporated, and that was actually incorporated...
I remember I voted against that whole page.
Did you?
Yes.
It was to ease the burden on homeowners who were simply trying to apply for something simple, like a above-ground pool.
Yes, or a shed.
Or a shed that was under a certain square footage.
And that's why I was wondering, did that square footage apply to the shed, the pool, or both? Because I think it was, no, we can save that discussion for another night, but I would like to open that up with the board just to make sure we're all on the same page for future references when...
I know the square footage of the shed was discussed a little bit when we were trying to adjust the requirements.
Right, I don't know if that does...
A above-ground pool would probably not fall into the same criteria as a shed.
The same size, right. So, but we had it in the same category as something that we would allow less documentation. So we can, maybe next time we meet, if we could just look at that instruction sheet. I don't remember seeing it on this application, but I did see it on the pool one.
Yeah, usually the applicant ends up keeping their instruction sheet.
My suggestion is if there's going to be any modification, any procedures, your rules or your paperwork, we should bring the zoning enforcement officer in to make sure he has some input.
All right, that's right. And the board...
To bring him in and...
So maybe next meeting, we just talk about it first amongst ourselves.
Again, my concern and my history is the Board of Health, I want to know where the septic system is before you put something on top of it, only to keep people from shooting themselves in the head, so.
Okay.
Euphemistically speaking of course.
Or foot or in the pool.
All right. So is there any other business to discuss? If not, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, vote?
Aye.
Aye, yes. Thank you.